Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley today, joined by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody. We're so glad you're here today.
We are. We are so thrilled to hang out with you today and to work with you on understanding what it means to prioritize and get your projects in order for your young living business, especially where it pertains to showing up online. There's so many things that you can do, could do, should do is a tiny box. We're going to talk about that today. And, uh, and we're going to talk about how we can get all of this in order so that you aren't overwhelmed. So as you're coming in, please head over into the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from, uh, what you're excited to maybe learn more about today. Uh, let us know. Uh, today you might see that I'm in a very different place. I'm in Alabama. Uh, I'm back home for, uh, a while, uh, to be with family and, uh, to help out with family first and things. And so we're certainly excited uh, to be out of the cold. Our family is so, uh, but Greg, you're under like, I don't know, what like a foot of snow now?
Something like that. It's snowing. I think it was 10 and a half inches in the last two days. Then we're supposed to get another eight today. So yeah, we're kind of buried. Like everything's closed. Except the FedEx truck, they just drove by, but yeah, I don't know.
You know, growing up here in Alabama, when there was even the slightest, slightest threat of like a sprinkling, a dusting of snow, the stores at the grocery store, the shelves would be totally raided. The bread, the milk, gone. Everybody's is eating milk sandwiches, apparently when it gets really cold here. Either way, we're, we're thrilled to be with family. I hope you guys are, uh, all doing wonderful, warm things this time of year in the northern hemisphere, at least. And you guys are enjoying summer in the south. So, um, anyway, today, uh, we are going to be uh, chatting with a member of our community, uh, who, um, has, has asked for some assistance on kind of getting things together, uh, and figuring out what comes first. When you are running a life, running a business, running a family, uh, and tend to all of the other, you know, various things that you have on your plate, it can feel really overwhelming to learn something new, to try to figure out something new, which for most of us, let's be real, figuring out a lot of the things that you do in good oiling is probably fairly new to you. Uh, and so it's easy to come from that place and just feel like, uh, deer in the headlights. Uh, and that's, that's maybe the nicest way to put it. You know, I've, I've definitely been with you guys. I understand, uh, what this can feel like, right? To feel like you have so many things that you need to get done and where do I even start? And we just get stalled, right? Uh, so how many of you actually, by the way, if, if you've ever felt like that before, let us know in the chat. We're not alone here. Let's, let's talk about this for a second. Have you ever felt that way before? Big yeses? Yes. So, uh, it's easy to get into this place. The good news is it's also very easy to get out of it. Uh, and that's exactly what we are going to be focusing on here today. Oh, wow. So we've got, we're not alone. We've got a lot of yeses here. All right. Fantastic. So, um, what I want to talk with you guys about today, cause as promised, we're talking about, to a degree, we're talking about project management, right? Uh, how we can sort of manage all of the tasks and things that we need to make sure get done, as well as the one-time projects that support our business, like building our website or, um, you know, we're building a system for following up or onboarding your people. All of those are valuable things that you should invest some time in, but a lot of us get invested in this idea that we gotta just like pour all of our time into learning about it and trying it and learning about it and trying it. And then we maybe neglect the other things that need to happen, or we kind of lose sight of the forest for the trees. So, um, we're going to get that done, uh, here today. Uh, we're going to be chatting with Camelia, who is a member of our community with the biggest heart and just such an amazing, amazing gift, uh, and love for people. Uh, so we're going to chat with her about how she can get her own personal priorities aligned where it pertains to her business and what she has access to in terms of time and resources for her business. Uh, and then we're going to get a game plan together so that we're totally sorted out and 100% clear on what happens next. And then after that, and after that, and after that, because the thing is, right? When you look at all the things that you want, how many of you here, by the way, can say, I want a website? Let's say, just give me a yes. I, I want, I want my own beautiful, my own brand on a website that looks really good. All right. It's everybody, right? Okay. What now? Say, uh, yes again, if you also would like to have your own private member area off of Facebook where you're serving your customers. Say yes a third time if you want that for your brand partners. Right? Let me hear a yes again, if you would like a system in place for onboarding your people. Right? For getting everybody started the right way. I could, I could name 20 more things. We all want them, right? How do we know what order to do these things in? How do we know where to focus our time so that our time is used most productively? What I want you to listen for today, as I'm chatting with Camelia, is where you feel sameness, right? Where you might've felt the same way. The questions that I ask Camelia, I want you to ask yourself. Right? And of course, if you have questions at the close of our call and you would like some guidance based on your situation, on where you might want to go next. If you didn't quite feel like you got it from the conversation that you guys are about, uh, to be present for here today, then please do ask those questions and we'll do all we can, uh, to make sure that you're served, uh, with our time here today and helping you get clear on that. So I'm going to go ahead and bring, uh, Camelia out. If I can find her here in the chat, let me find her. There we go. Hello.
Hello.
So happy to have you here today. So, uh, Camelia, yeah, but before we get started, um, could you maybe share briefly what, um, what your connection is to Young Living, right? So what is your really kind of big vision for being, uh, associated with this company and building a business with Young Living?
Yes. My big picture is eventually one day through baby steps, small steps, a journey, not necessarily a destination, is to go as far as I can. And with that, to help as many people see as many lives transformed by it as possible. And with those funds to bless the socks on people as opposed to offer them to be able to take and help people where there's needs and a foundation one day in the names of my mother, my father, my sister, best friend who have died. You know, and a son who died and it's been a lot, but with Young Living, seeing people's, people live their best. And it's not, it's not just live their best life. It's actually have the opportunity to actually thrive and to go, it brings me such joy and to leave a legacy. Um, because of the residual that can help even when I'm not here and to put my voice there.
Wonderful. Uh, it's yesterday, and just so you guys know, um, we, we decided to do this. Uh, it's actually Tuesday. Tuesday, we were chatting together in, um, Scanning Solutions Academy. And, um, and, and this conversation came up of feeling like you had failure to launch, right? Can you tell me a little bit about what all you're really kind of hoping to have in place and what you feel has kind of brought you to, to the place that you're at right now?
Yes. So over the past years, I started, you know, off with, you know, sharing with people and going, and then as things grew because of that sharing and because of the transformations, it grew, but my ability for technology wasn't growing as fast as the other. And as I'm serving and realizing it's me, and though I wanted to be all things to all people, I realize that I was not in my own estimation, well, by the evidence meeting that. And then when life happens, which it did, as I mentioned, with the various things that happened, that I wasn't really prepared in the way that I wanted. It, it meant that I stopped, but they didn't still get served. And that is a challenge. And though I've been here, I, I, I realize that having a system and being connected to this group was one of my top solutions to doing that. And, um, actually, wait, did I, sorry, I, I know I was traveling and I, I'm so late. Did I answer your question that you actually asked?
I think, I, I think we're, we're approaching it. Can, can we, let's, let's talk a little bit, because you've, you've been with Get Oiling for about a year. Is that right?
Well, I think it may even be Greg probably would know better. I, I think it's been, I think it's more because at one point I was, you know, using this exclusively to do those meetings when things fell off. So it, it definitely has been longer and, and Greg would be the one to answer that.
Okay. All right. Fantastic. Well, no worries either way. So, uh, you're in a position where, um, you have a team that you're serving. You're not new to Young Living by any means. And, um, and you would like to have a way that you can serve your people. Um, you also have contributed to a book as well, and you want to, you know, to have people who discover that book, then, uh, to be able to discover you on your own website, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And, uh, what else am I missing? So we want our, we want a website. We want a way to serve our customers and brand partners. Is there anything else that you would say, just generally speaking, is maybe top priority for you that you want to make sure you get done?
Follow the ability to have the member area, have the vault so that that's with understanding, have the website so I can direct people there, but separately. So my brand partners go, my, um, customers, and then those people related to this book who have no idea except for I wrote a thing on wellness and I put in the only thing I had, Get Oiling. Even though it wasn't necessarily done in that part, in that situation was going to be better than perfect. So I put it not knowing exactly where to go. Um, and I put my regular Gmail. I've learned so much by being on Get Oiling since then about how that could have been done. Um, and then to have a way to follow through. So when life happens, everybody can still be served in a way with the, I think we called the responders and that there's a place where they could go for that learning and to get off of, you know, the Facebook and you said something very valuable to me. It's the connection to me. I stopped. It actually took my breath away for a moment. It gave me goosebumps. When you said that it was such insight, it, it was worth your weight in gold. That people need to be connected to me and this is a tool to, to help that to happen. So that shift made me so elated to stay up, you know, whatever it took to, to be here. And to, we have a way then for my, the people to connect, to have follow through, to have an area that aligns with what their needs are. And then respond to those, I think maybe I said, to respond to them in a more timely fashion of which I've been able to do and answer the question, oh, what do you do? Like where I was on Tuesday? You know, what do you do? Do you have a website? You know, you have a card to stay connected with people we met while out. So.
Okay. So, um, so just to catch everyone up, who was maybe not, uh, who, who weren't on that call, uh, that you're referencing, when we chatted on Tuesday, um, I, I think that, that it, it sounded to me like you were in a place where you were very caught up in the, I feel like I need to, I need to, I need to, right? About, uh, getting all of these tech things figured out, which are, you know, they're not something that, that are second nature to you. Uh, and they're all fairly new and things that, that still need to be figured out. But what I had asked you, and if you would be open to sharing this, I think that this could be a really valuable instructive thing for folks who are tuning in. You have, um, you know, by, by virtue of being a Young Living brand partner, that the decision that you made, you went from using product to knowing and, and understanding that these are products you need to get into every hand possible. Can you maybe share with us, uh, maybe that instance that you told us about the other day on Tuesday? Tell us what it was about helping someone with Young Living products that made you decide to build a business with this, that made you decide that this was a mission for you?
That particular one of things like that, or back from the beginning, or that particular one that happened not long ago that represents?
The, the one that I think the representative one, the one you showed on Tuesday would be great. Yeah.
Oh, yes. So I, there was a person who, uh, just, there was a person that came and contacted, actually at a church and she had shared that she had been in such, uh, an accident, had chronic pain, didn't sleep, couldn't move her, her body was just in such, uh, a, a mess. And she lost her best friend on that day. She got a call. And so I went to her friend that she was visiting and said, you know, your, your friend really moved me. If you can ask her if she's, um, would like to, I have a thing called raindrop and I can, it's just putting some oils on her feet and her, her back. I said, I can't make any promises, but it could make a difference. I did get that call and I did go over. And when I was, uh, putting the, I was trying to get the feet for those under the raindrop, just trying, you're supposed to get those feet just so her feet, her legs, she said, they, they didn't touch. They had never touched. So I kept trying to move them and they didn't. They were just kind of stuck. But during the process, as I was putting, applying the oils, praying and applying the oils, at one point she had an emotional release. She stopped and she, the, the trauma was so deep. She said, oh, she said, this is so weird. She said, it's like a cold. I'm, I'm having this experience, but it's like it's going further and further away. I'm like, great. And I told her what that was called and that was totally normal. And as we continued, um, she continued to have wonderful things. And then at one point she stopped and she was so tickled, almost in tears. Um, and she, I said, what's going on now? And she said, my, my toes. She said, look, I put her feet together and said, introduce hello, big toe, hello, big toe. You know, she's like, I said, she said, my, my feet have never touched. And so I just let her linger there. So her toes, her feet, who had never experienced each other could do that. She'd never been able to do footseats, nothing. And then from there, when she sat up in tears again, she said, this is the first time that I've been without pain. And she had fallen asleep and she was excited for what that would mean for her newlywed as of the last year of what that was going to mean for her life and for her. And it was fantastic. And she's waiting to have more. Often when she went to her weekly, uh, adjustment and she was had chronic pain. I didn't say in her arm, in her top of her arm. She said, he said, I don't know what you did, but um, you just have to come back for maintenance now because that's in place and that's in place and just coming for adjustment. She was so thrilled. She the transformation was so deep and profound and she represents one of many who's had that.
So this story that you've just shared, and of course we've talked about this previously, and I, I hope that everyone here who's listening can maybe think back to a transformative moment that you've personally witnessed. Uh, whether that be yourself, something that you maybe like Camelia have facilitated for others, or even one that you have simply witnessed, um, after the fact or, or been told, uh, that has really touched you. This industry is over a hundred years old. This company is, you know, almost as old as the internet itself, right? It's definitely older than how we use the internet today. And the way that we share transformative information is through storytelling. That's been true for, you know, since the beginning of, of time, right? And what, what you have, Camelia, is a story that's touched you. And this is, I know this is not the only one that you have.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, right?
Sister of my mate, my sister, and though, and that, this is where it ends, where somebody's transformed and they're happy and ready to go, is also so powerful. For, as I shared over the time about my sister, um, who was battling a major life-threatening disease. And when I flew from my home to California to be with her, I did find her in a state where it pivoted and she was not going to recover, but she asked, she was so, did you bring the oils? She had put Frankincense on me, put the, the Valor on me. And she went a passing while I was there laying in the hospital with her and I didn't leave her side when I got there. But how? How it helped my heart to know that she smiled and she spoke all the things that they thought couldn't happen. That as she was laying there and in rapid pain, there's nothing they could do for her. The comfort that it brought her, the peace that it brought her. It's, it's invaluable. It's invaluable. So it is that and so much more. I have stories from young Owen and, and horses and kids and everything, but this that latest one. And for my sister, I only wish that I had it sooner. And now I thank you for being a part of the journey to equip me so I could do so much more. And it helps for so many transition one way or the other. And I thank you.
Absolutely. And we are honored, honored to be a part of this journey with you. I, I want to remind you, and of course, everyone who listens to this today and who may listen to this in the future, when you ever start to feel overwhelmed as it relates to what you do with your young living business, pause for a second and remember your story like this one. Or just listen to this story and let that inspire you. Because that's why you're doing what you do. You do what you do so that you can help facilitate that kind of transformation in as many people as possible. And if we can remember that, if we can keep that in our heart and, and, and top of mind, we remember that everything else that exists is simply a tool to help us get that thing done. Right? And there's a lot of tools you can use. You could use a phone, you could use pen and paper, you could walk up to people on the street. You could use Craigslist ads. You could, there's, I, I, when I used to build network marketing teams and share products through network marketing, I did everything, everything that you could possibly do. There's so many things you could do. There's not a specific right or wrong way, right? Obviously we're built to help you make sense of your, your young living business and to make it work beautifully and, and in a streamlined way for you. But the most important thing to know, uh, if, if you are, uh, setting out to create something new for your business, even if it is something that is supposed to support an existing function of your business, know that it is not some big nebulous, weird abstract thing. It is, it's, you need a house, which means you need a hammer. Right? Uh, and, and, and if, if we can keep that connection logically and maintain the emotional fuel uh, that comes from the reason why we do this, then it's a little hard to get overwhelmed because now it's exciting. Now I'm going to build a megaphone, right? Uh, so what I'd like to get into, and I want to whiteboard this, I'm going to get into Canva real quick. Uh, and for those of you who have a Canva account, this is something you could do as well. Um, you can, uh, put elements on a whiteboard and I'm going to be doing that with you here today. So the first thing that I would like to do, Camelia, is ask you, um, about your young living business as it is. Oh, and I'm going to turn off videos. This thing like disappears for me. You can do that as well, Greg. Thank you. Um, all right. So, uh, first things first, for your young living business, uh, you have, um, you, you have a silver business, right? Somewhere in the neighborhood of silver, right?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect. And so that means you've got your customers that you're serving. Um, are, are you in touch with your personals on a regular basis?
Close personals, yes.
Okay. Great. Uh, and what does that look like for you?
What?
When, when you're in touch with them, uh, are you calling them once a month?
Yeah, some I will, some, when it was, it is thriving, you know, not this past year because of all the things, but I typically I was doing every Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and joining in one on Thursday with meetings for various types, but I will call, text, uh, share. I do have something on Facebook, but I haven't been on, uh, that when all these things started, uh, happening. And, and they were, they've been very gracious to say, you know, we understand and you have to take care of the things you're taking care of. And there involve some other things that are beyond the scope to share here, of things were happening, but calling and texting, and I was doing classes. I've not done that, but I want to get back to that.
Okay. So, uh, so calling is perfectly acceptable. Calling people is perfectly acceptable. Uh, and that can be 100% of what you do for now. And so actually my first list here is going to be, I'm going to say, uh, doing now, right? And then we're going to have another one. We'll maybe put that down here in purple. And this is going to be what I want to do later, right? Right? So we, we do need to be able to honor what we're capable of doing now and not expecting ourselves to do every single thing all the time. So want to do. Uh, so doing now, uh, inside of doing now, we've got, uh, calls, which is perfectly acceptable. So this is calls. Uh, and then what we should also be doing now, and I'm going to add a should to this and just in case you're not already doing it, uh, notes in, uh, contact manager in Get Oiling, right? And then, uh, to do's or a reminder for yourself, right? To do's in contact manager. This for your personally enrolled is the bare minimum of what you should be doing, right? And, and this is perfectly acceptable if this is what you have in place right now. Now, where we're talking about maintenance for your person, is there anything else that you're doing now that we could list here, like that, that you're actually, you're doing on a regular basis that you feel comfortable with?
I'll text them a, a resource or ask, send them a resource like join in this meeting. I'll let them know what YL has. I kind of up, update them for people who are not on Facebook or dealing with like things as well to keep them informed, things like that.
Okay, great. And you have a Facebook group as well, it sounds like?
Yes.
Okay. That's great. Um, do you have an upline group that's, that's good, that you're a part of, that you can connect your, your customers to?
We do not, I do not have a, a active upline group.
Okay. Are there any team YL groups that you are a part of that you think might be helpful for your team to have access to?
Yes. Uh, yes. The Life Steps. I don't know if you consider that a, if that's an online group, but there are, we have the Life Steps and of course Get Oil and Grow, uh, workspace. And there are some other, I can't think of a call by the top of my head now, but some of the groups that I find here are places that I, now a lot of people they get, I try to be really mindful because a lot of times people get overwhelmed if it's something that has a cause or something to do, but I do try to hook them with things that would work for them or bring their resources in and put, and have it as a part of our, the meetings I was doing.
Got you. Okay. Okay. So one thing that I would highly recommend, uh, e- especially basically up until you are gold to platinum, is that as often as you can, if there is an upline, someone upline of you, uh, or a team YL, uh, you know, sort of open nurturing group, uh, for that, that you get a lot of value from, that you could add your customers to. I want to encourage you and anyone, uh, again, up until the point that you're maybe gold verging on platinum, to, um, be okay with and honor uh, the team value of connecting your people to others in the company. Uh, because that edification is powerful and it also really importantly kind of takes the monkey off your back. Cause you don't have to be everything to everyone. Um, so I would encourage you maybe, uh, in our Get Oiling Facebook group. Uh, if you guys can hop in there today, if you're a part of some really awesome team YL, meaning anyone could be a part of this group, uh, resource groups on Facebook, if you guys would share those inside of our group so that everyone could benefit from them. Uh, there's a lot of us who don't necessarily have an active upline that we can rely on. And so if you know of something like that, then that would be a wonderful thing to share. So what I would encourage, uh, just with the right now, um, you know, the, the maintenance for your personally enrolled should take you, uh, really just a couple of hours a month. Really it should only be a couple of hours a month because what we're doing is really investing our time and people getting started. Uh, and then keeping track of what we've invested in together, right? When we're getting new people going. Um, and, uh, and then of course we're just touching back, you know, hey, how is, I, I see that, you know, you, you mentioned wanting to work on X. Uh, how is that going for you? What are you working on? How can I support you? Here, I'm going to send you some resources. All right. I'll talk to you in two weeks, right? It's very, it's, it's very to the point, right? Now, when we talk about our want to do, uh, I know you mentioned you want to have a member area, right? So this is a member area. And, uh, and this is going to be one for a vault. Um, that's going to be a vault for our members. And you mentioned a vault for brand partners. Do you have, um, do you have very, very many people that are actively building with you right now?
I have, uh, some that are building right now and some that are under my other, um, very active and dedicated, um, legging. I want to support that. And there's another person who's building who, my daughter's a nurse practitioner, who's ready to make it a part of her new launching of her practice as well. And she's a, a builder. And there's another person that built it, but I'm going to help that leg. So there are some who are ready to launch within that. And I should say, when you asked me that, the question, uh, Terry C. Quest and her person who supports her, she does a, a group that they had on another forum that was growing. And I know her very well. She did the essential oil movie. I can't remember her name who helps, uh, with that. And Richard Bliss Brooks. Um, another one that I was going to, uh, connect them with as a part of, but introduce it via the vaults and things like that. Um, as a way to help them to put steps, uh, in place for that.
Got you. Okay. Okay. So this is, these are wants to do in the future. That's great.
Site, yeah.
Website and the want to do. Yes, yes. So that, that, that's getting to our, our next thing here. So we have our business. So this is our business that exists right now. Right? Uh, because this is like, do, do you have anything else that you sell or offer that's not Young Living? Do you have like a coaching or anything like that currently?
Uh, I am, uh, well, I have the AFT, which I made a part of, sometimes a part of these things, uh, AFT, uh, Roma Freedom Technique that I have and Uh, Roma Freedom Technique that I have, and then I have as a part of that. Book, it actually, I have those that are, are available that I should, uh. That could be sold, but I haven't. So I do have it, but it's sitting there because I didn't want to pass it out when they go to my page to see a link. That has nothing. So I have 200 books that are just sitting there that I've done nothing with until this is done.
Okay, uh, wh- wait, what, what are the 200 books?
There are 200 books, what that, where I wrote that article is actually in a part of a, a book. That was shared by other, you know, entrepreneurs about their area and helping and staying. Uh, connected with things. And so I have that, just, I just have the page and that's where I put, you know, reach me at Get Oil Link. Camilla and just my regular Gmail, but I haven't passed. That book has gone out by other people. I just haven't done anything with it personally until.
Okay.
I have this.
Okay, yeah, no, no worries, no worries. All right, so, um, let me get back over here. All right. So we've got, uh, we're going to get into what's going to be on your personal branded on your website. But then we've, we've got this really important thing that we need to talk about here and that is, um, building the business, right? So this is the actual, uh, business activity, right? This is, this is the thing that grows the business that you have. Um, and this is really, again, until you are. Near or actually, and until you're at diamond or higher. You really should not be worried too much about management, right? Um, because it's really a law of averages until you really start to get leadership sticking under you, right? Um, and, and really up until that point, it's all about, um, getting, you know, just getting into action and getting people in, right? So, um, but, but let's, let's go through, since you are very clear on what you want, uh, for your personal brand and website. Um, and you know, based on, on the, uh, the stuff that you have going on right now. What you have right now is you have a built-in. Get Oil Link site. Uh, with your story and photo. Which, by the way, is excellent. You've, you've written a beautiful story here. And this is absolutely perfect for your. Like where people land and, and find you because they can get in touch with you. They can click contact. They can get in touch with you. Uh, they can learn more about other things, right? There's all kinds of great stuff here. You don't have to worry about this, right? Now. This is also a thing that is perfectly good for right now, right? Um, but let's talk about some things that we would like to have. So that we can put these in sort of priority order. So just to, to kind of recap for everybody here, what we're going to do here is look at what, we're auditing what we have now up here in the white. And then we're going to lay out what we want in the purple. And then we're going to make ourselves a master list of what we need to do so that we can break this down into exactly what needs to be done in what order. All right. Hope that makes sense. If you guys have questions, please do make sure you're putting them into the Q and A. Um, and that way we can make sure that I don't miss any of the questions that you might have. So, um, so our want to do, uh, is we want to say something, we, we want to address the book, right? So book audience, I'm just going to write that down here. So we want to talk about, um, the book. What else are you wanting to have your personally branded website do for, for you?
Have it sold that the, I like the way you put it, the book audience who knows nothing about any of this, just. Out is different from the customer slash member area diff. You know, in terms of the little buttons and that different for the brand partner. So. My, my thought is that people would come, since I did already put that out there into the thousands of books that went out. Um, that they would come to a general site about health and wellness, but when they click on their menu items, they would go to their selected. Areas where the book audience would get the program developed for that, which includes wellness, which eventual link. Back and over for things. Oh, and I have the bundle for the Zito. I just don't have that active yet, but that's another option that could go there as well as a wellness assessment type thing. For the members and customers, I want to have things there that. Uh, you know, the general members and customers of Y L or. Have value there as well as, oh, one for prospects. So someone who's coming like the lady that I met at the restaurant in Hilton Head, for example. Who was very interested in smelling the ladies that I had with me who are in their nineties. How could they be so like vibrant and moving? She wanted some of that and I said, oh, I'll get you information. You know, she, she asked about the site and how could she reach me? So I want to have that as well as something strong for the brand partners.
Got you. Okay, okay. So we want to have, um, when, when people arrive on your website, you want them to see the wellness focus. And to ideally move in a direction of communicating with you. Uh, we do want to provide a place for the people who, uh, arrive because of the book to understand what. Uh, what you're about and what they can get there. And then of course you want to be able to move your customers and members off to their respective areas. And then, uh, to offer Zito scans when you're ready to do that. Okay.
Right, right. A F T, you're, uh, you have the thing for A F T or place a call button to consult with me or contact me. Uh, type of thing you've seen.
Excellent, excellent. Okay. So one thing that you should know, uh, and I think that this, this is kind of going back to the original question that you had asked me on Tuesday about this sort of, you know, feeling like you're in this place of failure to launch. You have a lot of this stuff already happening here. This is a wellness focused website that has your name on it. It's got your photo. It's got your story. You can very easily inside of, of this description here, let them know, I also offer this and this and this. If you would like to learn more, click the, click the button below and this is a call to action to contact you. And you do still have that. So, um, I know that it's, I, obviously I'm not saying that we shouldn't do the other things, but so you know, like you do have. An infinitely shareable thing that does a lot of the things that you're talking about right here. So don't, don't discount what you have already done because you have already done a lot of good work.
And able to change some of the pictures on there to align, you know, to kind of represent more. With some of the photos that are on, we can come back to that because you're doing other, that was just a picture I was trying, but down below in the, um. I do need to change that because that's my daughter, um, but down below with the pictures that are a, a part of your wonderful. Uh, template here, not so much that.
So we, we can't, uh, we don't have the ability to change out the images that are in the built-in theme. Um, but, but that's, that's fine. I mean, when, when it's time for you to focus on creating your personal thing, you're going to be creating your own personal thing. And this is really designed to be something that is compliant, that's useful. Uh, and that can help you get done the basics, right? Which is this stuff, uh, right here, right? It's, it's, it's the basics. It's all this top level stuff that you are, I mean, to some degree already doing, right? Um, so then you just, you let that be the thing that's holding its place while you build the next thing, right? So let's get into this final category here, because we have the business, we have. Uh, we have the, the brand we want, you know, to build in the direction of the business we want. But let's talk about the activity, uh, that we are doing on an ongoing basis to build the business that we want. So, um, can you tell me a little bit about what sharing and inviting and that kind of thing looks like for you right now?
Well, back to launching, like I said, this, this year with the devs, uh, some took me, what I was doing was on Sunday. It was a wellness topic usually with something with, from Sarah Harnish. The other times I use some of the grow workspace for Monday was for my builders. Tuesday was teaching Tuesday. Wednesday was Wednesday Wellness. Thursday was a tech, uh, night. Monday was for the, for the builders, for brand partners to come for inspiration. Uh, and moving toward, you know, resources for them and hearing their ones and, and about sharing. Um, so I need to get back to, especially not as rigorous because of the timeframe and to do more now. Community oriented in my time zone because I was working in other time zones.
Yeah. So what, what I would encourage actually, because a lot of that sounds like it, while, while lovely, it sounds a lot more complicated than it actually needs to be.
Yes.
Right? We don't need to have seven days a week of you doing Zoom calls. For you to find people who need, uh, a, a significant change and transformation in their life right now. You have already found people like that out in your day-to-day life. And what I would encourage you and, and anyone here today, uh, to, to continue focusing on. Is the thing that got you here in the first place that got you the good stuff that you have. If you have customers. Do what you did to get customers before, right? Um, don't throw out the way that you did it before and, and try to replace it with something entirely new, right? You want, you want to, um, build on the business that you have. So you have gifts and your gifts are in service. Right? You are someone who is called, uh, to serve people and to be emotionally and, and personally spiritually present. With people and, um, and obviously that's something that is only available in, uh, you know, certain capacities for certain, uh. Amounts of time. But what I would encourage you to do, Camelia, is, um, is to think of something. That you could do in a group setting, not for people who are currently oily, right? Because we want to find people who aren't oily, um, because we want them to get oiled, right? So, um, can you, uh, tell me, is there anything that you really get a lot of joy or fulfillment out of? That you could maybe invite others to do with you locally or even online. Um, thinking, you know, things like, um, fellowship, book clubs, crafts, um, you know, just things that you already love. Uh, that, that you could invite others to engage in with you. What, what would that look like for you?
Uh, uh, I put down in my little, it's toxic for, you know, to. Hub with many with toxic free things for both the school or the community that it's, you really don't want to be spraying Lysol on. The, the little mattresses and in the schools, you know, so toxic free things there. I do have a teacher or. Someone who lives in the community says she'd be willing to, um, invite a couple of people over for that.
If I could, if I could, if I could stop you real quick, Camellia. I'm asking about something that's fun for you.
Oh, fun for me.
Yeah.
That really is cooking is fun.
Oh, okay.
Singing is, um, I do music, uh, sing. That's also fun. And then gathering with people to talk about wellness, uh, it's actually, uh, fun for me. Or making people smile, trans, you know, being that person that, you know. Help somebody get an opportunity to go out or to do something that they normally wouldn't.
Got you. Okay. So what I would encourage you to do, uh, you're, you're, are you active on social media?
No, not, I have it, but that's not one of my strong suits at this moment.
Okay. Well, you are active in your community.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So let's start with that. And, uh, I would encourage you to, in your community. Um, you know, from the people that you're connected with, if you don't have personal contact information for them. Uh, make a goal of the next time that you see them, maybe if you're at church or out in the community or wherever that might be. And you, um, and, and you see somebody, find a reason to sit with them sometime. And, or invite them to something fun. Uh, maybe decide that, uh, twice a month, you're going to do a cook together at your place. Or you, maybe you, you organize a place in the community, uh, where, where this could be done. And you invite people and just create an opportunity for people to come together. And this is not a, um, come together and I'm going to teach you everything I know. Um, this is not a come together and I'm going to oil you. Um, this truly is a, a personally fulfilling. Social activity that's allowing you to be more present and connecting with others in the community.
That would be a spa day then for, for, for caregivers.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Done that or just bring them because they just need to relax from whoever they're caring for, doing a people who give out all the time. So. We've got them and do their, we just a thing to relax. So that would be.
Perfect. Okay. So have you done something like that before?
Uh, yes, on a small basis, it was done for me for my birthday because some people saw, see me as that. But we have done that for people prior to weddings and I do it on an individual basis, but I could bring people, more people together.
Okay, perfect. So right now you're basically, you're casually meeting and interacting, but you're not really. Uh, going out there and connecting with new people on a regular basis, right?
No.
Got you. Okay. So right now we are, we're sort of, uh, meeting because of circumstance and not necessarily intentionally. Uh, but what you might want to do are some local fun events. Uh, you mentioned cooking. Um, uh, cooking parties or something like that, right? So what, what I want to encourage you to do, and this is just, this is for you specifically because. I hear you as being someone who gives and gives and gives and gives. I think that it's really important for you to find ways to interact with what you know you need to do. In ways that are fun and fulfilling for you, because this business is one that you get to build on your terms. And it needs to be something that feeds your soul. It is a vehicle for you to feed others, which is a big reason why you do it, obviously. Uh, but, um, but, but we need to make sure that it feeds you. So, um, so make sure that you are creating opportunities where you thrive. Because that's going to attract people to you. And of course, uh, where people are in that environment with you. Uh, they're enjoying time with you. You're building relationships where trust forms. And of course. Yeah, if, if, if it's the right thing for them, then you can bless them with what you know, right? Uh, but we don't want to make, uh, our entire, uh, sort of brand as we are, uh, either in our personal lives or even online. Uh, as being something that's just about the thing that we sell, right? And even if you are like Camellia, and I know that I am too, uh, someone who is, um, very invested in. Um, what's in our products and being healthy and having a holistic approach to living. Um, it's important that that isn't 100% of what everyone sees of us because for them, if they know that that's also our business. They've, they don't see any depth there or reason to connect further or build trust, right? Even if you are the most trustworthy person and someone who knows things that could genuinely legitimately change their lives. If how they're seeing you show up is just this way that, um. You know, that, 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 that's reflective of what you're selling, they're not going to see a reason to want to engage further. And we want people to see why being more closely connected is going to be advantageous. So Camellia, based on everything that we've talked about here today, and I think that this is really, really, um. Uh, well, okay, so I, I, I think that the, what I'm sharing with you is going to be important. Very specifically for the kind of emotional weight that, that you have, um, been feeling with everything. Not just related to Get Oil Link specifically, but it's almost like in some of the things that you've shared with me, you feel like you have. A responsibility to create a thing for other people. Um, and, and, and the first thing that I want to encourage you to do is where we're talking about the maintenance of your business. And it, and educating people who are customers and taking care of people who are in this sort of column here. You're dealing with adults who have access to computers and the internet and information, just like you did. Once upon a time, Camellia did not know everything Camellia knows about wellness and about, um. You know, and, and about toxic ingredients and all that kind of stuff. And it's important for us to honor that people need to start somewhere and that you don't need to be the person that gives them everything that they know. On their journey, because I don't think anyone did that for you. You had to learn a lot yourself. And I think that's true of everyone here in our knowledge that we gain, we hold more highly than knowledge that is handed to us from others. So we do want to honor that process. And so where anything falls into this thing, this category right here. And I'm going to say that this is going to be true for you if you are watching this. Um, up to, again, gold going into platinum. You can keep this a very sort of lightweight thing where you are doing care calls. Right? Where you are connecting with people, take, keeping your notes in your system. Uh, you, we have trainings on our contact manager. Only focus on those and use those and be in touch with your people. The majority of our time. Needs to be focused on the getting ourself out there in the world. Getting yourself out there in the world doesn't even require a website. I mean, uh, you don't need anything new, brand, branded to you or fancy. You could literally have a page just like this one, as we all do when we get started with Get Oil Link. So, um, so the most important thing we can do in our business is make our business grow, right? Uh, because people will come and go, but it is our job as a brand partner to keep them coming. And so, um, anything we can do to this end and, and for you at this point, what I would say is, uh, is number one. Really study what's on this website that you currently have right now so that you know what's here. And when you are communicating with people out in the world and you send them to your website, tell them where to go. Say, hey, you know what? If you go over to, um, getoil.com/chameleonorson and you scroll down, you're going to read a little story. That I've shared here and, and why I've decided to, uh, to use oils. So maybe that's because this story is important in a conversation that you just had. Or maybe somebody wants to know how you're making extra money, right? And you can say, hey, you know what? If you go to Chameleon Wars, uh, Get. And you can say, hey, you know what, if you go to chameleon Morrison, uh, get oiling.com slash chameleon Morrison, um, there's actually a a tab up at the top that says opportunity, just click that and it'll tell you what you need to know and then let's get back together and talk, right? So what I want to encourage you to do first is to use this as the tool that it was made to be for you. And that is to facilitate the stuff that you're already doing, which for you is very much just out in the world, belly to belly, person to person. Where you can say, just head over here. And if somebody lands here from the book, they're landing on a wellness website, right? You've you've got your own personal message here. They're they're going to see what you want them to see right now, which is your story and the ability to contact you. So that's important, right? Now, um, so first, I I would honor, you know, what you have accomplished here and the fact that what, if you were to simply move forward today for the next week and just make sure that you know what's on this page, so that you can use this as the tool that it is for you. And then make sure when you are logged into your dashboard and you are chatting with people that you're going into your contacts, maybe you're adding a new contact, uh, maybe you're adding notes on an existing contact, right? That kind of thing. Uh, make sure that you are following these steps right here in the doing now. And really, all that means is, is that you are setting an appointment to be in touch with somebody that made a commitment to their own wellness through you, because they're a young living customer. And you're just touching back on them on a periodic basis that you guys agree on, right? So if it's every two weeks, uh, if it's every week and a half, if it's once a month, whatever that might be, you set that up and you do it. And that now becomes something that you don't have to really think about until it's time to do it, right? Now, let's talk about um, where to kind of focus our efforts next, right? Because that's this really kind of what we're here for today. And this is actually, and and believe it or not, you guys, the the exploration of all of this um, and all of the time that we've spent here, like that that is really the bulk of the most important stuff, right? If I was really kind of trying to figure out what do we have? What is actually going to move the needle in my business? And then from there, how can I prioritize? Now, because you are a silver business, your focus really needs to be in getting more business and not necessarily in the management, right? That's not to say that you shouldn't work toward having these things right here, having your member area set up with all this great information. And so what I would encourage you to do, if this is something that you want done sooner, is to perhaps um, reach out to our team, right? And and maybe like have them do it for you, but your personal time needs to be spent the majority of the time on growing the business, which doing these things right here, these things don't grow the business. They they maintain what you already have, which is great. But if we shift too early into maintenance activities, we lose the business we have because we're not getting any new business, right? So what I would do first for you, Camelia, is um, is based on these different things that you want to be showing up on your website. Don't make a homepage yet. Start with, what do you want to say to the book audience? And then let's make a page about that, right? What I would also encourage you to do is to, and I know that you you have um, Linda's program and she has pages for Xyto Scan or Wellness Scan Offer if you're doing Intovia or Xyto. So you can have your own page for that. And then as you create these pages, link them up here. Link them right up here in in your um, in your menu, right? Once you have those things, one at a time, once you have those things in place and you're ready to present your brand with all of the things that you offer, all of these things, then you create your homepage and you can then say on your homepage, hey, by the way, I was published in such and such book, if this is you, head over here. Are you looking for a wellness consult? Here's where you can go, right? If we can build the things that we need first, then we we build the front door last, right? We put, you don't um, you don't uh, hang curtains before you, you know, put drywall up, right? And so in in this case, your homepage, you know, your website, if you will, um, that is something that's more personalized than this is sort of the curtains. Uh, what we would want to do is just focus on what's needed next to execute what it is that you want to do. Uh, so I would, I would basically make a project here and let me actually go over. I'm going to get out of my share here and uh, just open up like a word processor document for you. And we'll go through this real quick.
And while you're, the the one for the the member area, the vault is that some of the people who have fallen off or those who might be stimulated, you know, kind of in-house to go back to purchasing where they're there, but they're not actively doing anything, or there's, in some of the groups, there's, you know, people by the forties are dropping off. I thought if I could have something that says, hey, here's resources, here's information, especially because I can't go back to the six day a week one. Then having that there would be like a mini launch where they could create create activity, because then they have the things that they also need with the commitment to, that they made of. I don't know anything about it. So, oh, well, you'll have me. Well, now I have to have me in a more automated form. So then I can't spend that time in a few minutes talking, but they have someplace to go.
Mm hmm. Well, where they have to go right now is communicating with you. And that's perfectly fine. You don't have to go build them, um, y- y- you don't have to build them a house to go to. You already have a house. That's your relationship with them, right? So it it is something that would be valuable for you to have long term. But if this is taking up time that could be spent focusing your efforts on finding new people to help and serve, then it is something that ought to take a backseat for now, right? Because if you want to grow the business that you want and and you want to have the impact from the business that you want to have, we're not going to find that in 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 trying to pick up uh, and and drag people along who have fallen off. People are going to engage if they are ready, if they want what you can help them get, right? And if and if they aren't, if they aren't engaging with resources that they already have, including communicating with you directly, then building them a brand new thing to go to. I mean, how how is that going to engage somebody who's already disengaged, right? So what I would encourage is just work with what you have, right? Where with business maintenance, it's, you know, it it is work with what you have with who you have.
Yes.
Right? And and that does mean you're going to be on your care calls. That does mean you're going to be uh, notes in the contact manager. That does mean you're going to be setting up, um, you know, to-dos to make sure that you follow up. And so you have that in your contact manager. Now, let's talk for your brand presence is um, keep the uh, the get oiling um, built in for homepage for now, right? And then let's uh, build a page that talks about the book and um, and then shows, uh, wha- wha- what do you want to do? If people read the book, you want them to reach out to you?
Oh, when they read the, when they read the book, the page at the bottom of the book says to contact and it sends them to the get, you know, to the general get oiling.
Okay.
But I don't know that they're there without, uh, uh, because then it just comes a general population, but it's actually not live. So I wanted to make sure that that I know where they can go when they do come. Well, some people probably gone there and just found nothing, but I do want to make sure that there's something there with the resources that will be built off of that page.
Yeah, got you. Yeah. So so then just create a page and get whaling uh, that talks about the book and then tells them to reach out to you. You're going to use hashtag contact uh, in the um, in the button URL. So so that it pops up your contact form, you don't even have to build anything funny on the page, you just, you know, contact me. Um, and then um, to pop up contact form, okay? Uh, and so that's going to be the first thing that you want to do, because that that is coming up. The next, and I think most important thing to do, is uh, is to write the story. Uh, write, write out all, write out several stories. From uh, or testimonials. Uh, that's uh, the story that you shared with us at the, at the top of our call today, why you do what you do. That is something that belongs on your homepage. That is something that can be used. And actually, what I would invite you to do, perhaps we can come back and do this. It's write out uh, some stories here and then we can turn those into a page for your website, right? So write out the stories or testimonials and that's the um, you know, it's it's what happened and then what you, where you're going now, right? Like what what you want to do with this information. Now, um, from here, you you're not currently offering Xyto Scan, so I wouldn't even worry about that yet, right? Um, you could offer a wellness consult, that could just simply be a contact me, right? So this could be um, create a contact or a wellness consult page, and you could also, again, use contact for now, if you want to keep it simple, right? Right? Uh, create a wellness consult page. And let's see, we're going to turn this into, this will become homepage in the future, right? So create a wellness consult page and then put new pages in your menu, right? Because again, you're going to be able to send people to where they need to go. You don't have to do a complete redo of everything, right? Um, and then and then late, these are the things that I would encourage you to do first, right? Later on, for business maintenance, you want to look at at getting your your vault built. But I would not, here, I'm going to go back to video here. I would not start focusing on anything that is um, aside from your personal presence, maybe you do start doing a live call once a week and you do that in lieu of having a member area, because it's you and it's live and that's a multipurpose activity where you can bring more people in. Uh, that's, that's something that's two birds, one stone. So um, a private member area, I would, I would wait until you've got your homepage built and you're doing your your events and using Get Oiling for that.
And just call, so if I go back to doing, even if it's one or with the grow, or no, with the, yeah, with the grow, they, you know, classes or whatever there, or whichever material, record those. I could record those and then just keep them. So when it's time to have an area, those can go um, into that area. So do the things and then record it.
Yeah, absolutely. So you know what you could do? If you really wanted to, you you have to be very okay with having a work in progress. You have to be very, very okay with this all being a work in progress. If you can give yourself that grace, then then create a member area and then have nothing in there and say, as we do our live calls and events, I will be adding the recordings here. And let it be that. Let it be that. I mean, it's it's kind of the same philosophy I'm asking you to take on your homepage, which is to have the work in progress. You've got the built-in theme, you have a website. It does a lot already, right? So just add one piece at a time that you need. Add the piece for the book people, right? Add the piece for Zito when you're ready. And then when you feel confident about this and you feel clear that, all right, I have, I know everything that I'm offering, it's already here, people can find it in the menu. Now, let me build the beautiful thing that directs them straight to whatever, right? That's what I would do. And just continue, most importantly, um, with your outreach and your communications with people, use your contact manager. You're going to get the most out of your good oiling system if you're actually using it to support the business that you already have, which should be 70% new people focused on getting new people uh, using product. And then uh, 30% on maintenance and projects. And I think there was a question about this uh, in our, in our Q and A from Allison. So um, you know, you you really do want to make sure that, um, you know, if you're wanting to, i- if you want to build a thing, that's great. You want to ask yourself what utility it has right now to help you get more new customers into your business, because that is your number one uh, business prerogative right now. Uh, and really, again, up until you are getting closer to that higher leadership level, um, you can lean a lot on what Young Living already has on things that are out there in the community. There are leaders that have opened up their groups and made those available, even if you're not in their direct organization. Um, just so many great things and it's good for you uh, in leadership to edify others to your people, because it teaches them to do the same and it teaches them to not believe that they will have to be an island for their people. I don't know if if anybody else here today has ever felt that way before, like you are an island for your people or maybe you feel like you've witnessed other people do that, now you got to do it too. You don't have to be that. So um, so yeah, Camelia, I I would, I would really um, really be happy and um, and at peace with the extraordinary work that you've already done, because you should be and you deserve to be. And uh, and and begin first with knowing that everything is always a work in progress, right? And um, and and just build, build one thing at a time. Uh, to, so today, instead of saying, oh, I need a whole website that does all of these 27 things, I need on my website a place, because I was published in a book. Can we give Camelia a round of applause for being a published author, please? So I was published in a book. Hey, it, hey, you're a published author now. Um, so now I need a place where I could send folks who read that book. So make a page, one page, just one page on your good oiling site and then make sure that that shows up in your menu bar. You did that. Check it off. You accomplished that. All right, now I want to start offering wellness scans. Create one page that says, I offer wellness scans, here's some of what we can go over together. And then just have them use the contact form. If you're, if you're, if you're new to the tech stuff and you don't want, you're not, no, uh, what do I connect to campaigns, this, that and the other? Don't even worry about that. 90% of your business is you being present with people. And so just let your website facilitate that before you start worrying about getting into all of the many very high level complications that you can put in place very successfully with our platform. That's not where you start. We got to learn to crawl before we can learn to run, right?
Yes, you are right. I I just wanted to add for those who are um, listening. And it's funny, sometimes it's not that you know things and I probably would say it to someone else, but you often as a caring person, you don't see for yourself. One of the things that Ashley said, and I just had to just yield to her, that she was absolutely right when she asked me the question. She said, when I shared that experience with that person. And and it's true, I was feeling a little bit like uh, what I'm not doing and just all the things I want to do and I wasn't recognizing that. And with that person that I, that I explained about the raindrop, and she's, Ashley asked me, she said, um, very nicely, but very pointed. She said, and what technology did you use when you spoke to that person? And I didn't use any. And for the other, what technology, what websites? Well, none. She said, you are the value and the technology is there to help you to facilitate moving things for you. And that was a real shift. And it made me realize that even over this past year, maybe I could have just put a little something in the Facebook group, because I was looking for the big bite. What I need to do was to start with a small appetizer again. So I'm going to relaunch and I'm going to start that today and do as uh, you said. So I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the insight and the wisdom that you did and what this group provides. So thank you so much. It's, you know, getting my head straight, but it's still so much.
We are so honored to have you as a part of this community and that you would open yourself up uh, to 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 be on this call today so that others might benefit from your journey and 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 your um, your, your, your journey of knowing and learning. Uh, so, yeah, we we so, so very much appreciate you. I did have one question here from Allison. Uh, what did you say uh, that we should be spending uh, our time on for a couple of hours a month on Personally Enrolled? The yellow box maintenance for Personally Enrolled. So um, so the big picture of your business is you should be spending 70% or more of your time focused on the activities in your business that bring new business in, that's inviting, that's sharing, that's closing, that's following up. That should be 70% of your active time spent on your business. Uh, so that means communicating with people. If you don't have a a big following on social media, most of us don't. That means you are making a point to be out in your community, maybe hosting events, going to events, being a social person, making new friends. Uh, and then, of course, you know, connecting with warm market, you all already know that piece though, right? Probably haven't spoken to all of them yet, though. Uh, make sure that you are uh, using your contact manager to that end. Uh, and then, of course, where we're talking about maintenance for our business, there's been a culture that has proliferated in uh, Young Living for decades. And that is that you personally, as a brand partner, need to be Professor Oils and um, you know, and and lots of other oils hats for your people when what you're getting paid to do is refer Young Living customers, right? You're not getting paid to be an oily professor, right? You could go and get a certification and teach classes on that and get paid to do that. But as a Young Living brand partner, it's not what you're getting paid for, right? So I want you to do the things that you get paid for. So I want you to do the things that you get paid for. And um, and regurgitating or, or, or going through tons and tons of work to like pull together something that exists in very readily pointed to easy places to find information on the web that adults who are your customers can go and read and partake in themselves. I don't want you doing that work, because you don't get paid for that, right? So um, a lot of folks in Young Living do that, and that is something that you feel like is, it's expected of you. I want to encourage you to um, bless and release uh, that way of thinking and being, uh, because it doesn't serve you or your people. Uh, and so when you're, when you're working with your people, uh, and that's your customers, we love them. And it is our job to help that person find a hero product, so that they are in love with this company and order whether you call them or not, right? And so sure, you are going to be a facilitator in their education. You are going to be more present with people who haven't found their hero product yet, you know? Um, and that's fine, but it doesn't take seven hours a week to do that, right? If you're like, this, this is where we have to get into better practice with how we communicate, asking better questions, being more present and sitting and watching me train you can help you a little bit, but if you aren't actually going out there and asking the questions and doing the things, when's the growth going to happen, right? Uh, so 70% of the time needs to be in the doing to grow the business, 30% or less needs to be in the maintaining and taking care of what you currently have. And then of course, uh, in any kind of projects uh, that you have as well, which you should break down into their constituent parts. So if you want a website, like we talked about today with Camelia, you don't have to have some, I mean, obviously, if you want to have it done and you know what you want, call our team. Hello, they can do it for you. And you could just not even have to worry about it. But if you are in a position where you want or need to DIY this, remember that you don't have to have the end all be all perfect, everything, because it's always going to be a work in progress. 100% of the time, this is a work in progress. So build the one page that you need right now. And continue using the homepage that's built in. And then build the next thing that you need. And then the next thing, just one bite at a time. So I know we've gone over quite a bit.
You build the one page right now.
Yeah, just build that one page right now.
Work on the one page and then we'll get that on the menu item. And when those, and they'll all be separate, those, I'd make it separate. Okay?
Yep, that's right. Yeah, just make a menu item for the book people. You've got that covered. Uh, and then uh, what I would really encourage you to do is uh, is then start looking for ways that you could be present in your community. I think that the next way after that, you're going to really be using your good oiling site is making events that you can invite people to. Cause then if you say, go to my website and slash events, now they can go RSVP for that spa day, right? They can do this or do that, right? Um, yeah, just one little, one thing at a time. Cause once you get good at one thing at a time, you can start doing more things at a time, right? You can walk and chew gum at the same time, right? Some people can juggle and walk and chew gum at the same time. Uh, but they had to learn how to throw it, like catch a ball before they could juggle, right? So just one, one thing at a time.
Yes, I'm one thing at a time. Yes.
Yes. I'm so proud of you and uh, thank you all for being on today. Uh, and yeah, we'll be back same time next week. And um, Camelia, I, I hope that we stay in touch about this and I'm so excited for you.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you so, thank you so much. Much to think about and one page at a time.
That's right, one page at a time. Oh, oh, sorry about that. Um, my computer's got a little bit of a lag there. I am so appreciative of you and I look forward to having you back on, Camelia. Thank you so much. Uh, and thank you everybody for being here today. We'll see you again next week. Have a great week. Take care. Bye.